...to supply the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call the members first.
Trusty Tremblay.
Yes.
Trusty Gresinda.
Here.
Trusty Tremblay.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
There you go. Motion to approve minutes of the October 1st meeting?
Salute.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, additions, deletions, changes? Need discussion? One figure signify the saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion curious? Presentation petitions, communications, notices, general question, case for members of the community? You'd like to do a playground?
Sure.
Thanks. It'll save me.
I guess I would, sure. We had our first playground.
They've all been copied to this.
Okay, great. Then y'all know we've had our first playground committee meeting. We sent out letters to the businesses and miscellaneous vendors to both the town and villages. We had already deposited some money. We have some cash on hand for expenses like postage and other items. As of today, I have to deposit two more checks as well. We have $1,275 already and tomorrow I will be depositing $750 more dollars.
Very good. Very good.
We're working at it.
And we also have a person that attended the meeting who's built some playgrounds and he's volunteered to take the plans and go with them. And you know, wishing to donate? Can I give your phone number?
Yes, you may.
I call Karen Gresinda at 298-3732. We appreciate your efforts and... Anyone have a question or discussion for Karen?
Well, looking forward to attending the next meeting now.
Yeah. I would like to plan ahead and put the next meeting either before or after the village board meeting, whichever would work out fast and natural. And I send out an email notice to everybody when we make those plans set and stuff. Okay.
Any else for Karen? Mike, can I report?
Yeah, it's been quiet that time of year again, couple building permits. The house up on the street is finally starting to come down. Guess he's worked on it there the last two weekends. First weekend didn't get a lot done. He had some mechanical problems with his back over. I see this past weekend, looks like the back half is also not on it. So it is coming down and he's gonna do what he said he did or what he said he was gonna do. Had a person that had a chimney fire, had to do an inspection on Prospect Street. That's all okay now. And getting ready for a couple of zoning board meetings that we have planned here for next week, I guess. Other than that, do routine calls. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Would you like to give the board? Are you comfortable with giving the board some information on the water project? How that's progressing or not progressing?
Well, after we went to the last meeting, our engineer, Matt Cooper, was there burning a car. And he explained to the village of Ross's Point what we've all been hearing and they've been hearing, but they wanted him down there. And there seems to be an issue with dwelling units and how they account for their water versus what's in the study that was given by Barton Le Judas. So hopefully they're trying to resolve that. We didn't score very well on the intended use plan though. We're below the funding line, so Matt is trying to get with the health department to get us more points. I just hope he doesn't burn his bridges in the way because if Ross's Point doesn't come on board with this project and we're not above the listing as it is, you know, I don't wanna see him get hurt here in the process with all this. But right now, we're just waiting for Ross's Point to basically give an answer as to what they wanna do with this.
And as far as the points go, we may have to make a trip to Albany to argue our case.
Yeah, we're looking for 25 more points, which he says if they scored it according to what he thought they should've done, we would have plenty of points. But there seems to be a little bit of a difference there as to water at the border versus, you know, the need or the desire.
What is Ross's Point's hesitancy on this?
Well, they're going through some financial issues and they're trying to iron out all that stuff and a couple of board members have a problem with assuming more debt. Not sure that they really understand how this would all work. They seem to think that they have an existing debt, which they're gonna have anyway, if they buy into this, well, there's new debt, but the rates would stay the same if maybe possibly go up a few percentage points. If they go it alone, they're gonna triple. So, you know, I mean, following the figures, I guess, whether or not to believe them, so... I mean, that's what I got of that.
Yeah, I agree. I was there too and I think there's a lack of understanding the overall project too and the need for the whole community, I think. I don't think it's clear.
Well, to me it was...
Try to make it clear, I don't think it was...
It was frustrating because one of the noble, that's been a noble right along, again, wasn't at the meeting. And I thought it was important that, you know, everybody has commitments, I understand that. But something like this, I think you gotta make the effort, you gotta be there to listen to it. But the ones that were yes are still yes, but the no votes, I don't know if they're gonna change their minds, you know?
But like coming from on, at this stage, we have a memorandum to go forward.
Right.
At what point does it become a cutoff where we have to have full, you know, participation from the whole board?
I kinda think we're very close to that now because the next step would be to get some seed money to go out and start looking for wells and, you know, as Matt explained, if we wait for the grants to come along, this could drag a couple of years. Whereas if we borrowed money in anticipation, you know, we could start the project a lot sooner. So to me, it's... I think it's time.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that maybe we get just the shared service committee back together. I think we need to... I've talked to a lot of village residents, a lot of them don't understand what it's about. They haven't heard, they don't know. I think the key to getting the board on board is also getting the residents' support.
Well, we've had plenty of public meetings and...
Yeah, and I've mentioned that and they've said, well, you know, we didn't see it, we didn't know about it.
Sort of a last minute thing.
I don't want to turn this into a shared service meeting, but I think we should get together and discuss ways of doing that. I have ideas, you know, how to advertise it, try to get everybody there.
Well, I still, I still consider this a win-win situation for all three entities.
So do all the town and both villages.
But I agree with you, there's some lack of understanding here. To me, if this board had a choice of joining that project or not joining it and having to go out and borrow money five years from now or three years from now to upgrade my, upgrade the water system or to go find another source of water, I think I would be 100% behind the idea that the grant money will be there if all three entities cooperate. If Ross's Point does not come on board on this, it's done.
Without any grant money at all, it even makes sense. So any grant money we get, it's a bonus. I mean, it's like found money as well, so...
Very good.
Well, and doesn't this project benefit Ross's Point the most?
Yes.
I would say yes.
That's why I'm so confused with it.
For quality of water, yes.
Right. And expenses.
And expenses. You look at the savings...
Because you're looking at...
Their water rates would stay relatively the same.
Right.
The key is it benefits everybody by providing means of economic development. And if we can supply 100 jobs so 100 of Ross's Point houses stay filled, it benefits Ross's Point. I mean, you have to have jobs keep people here.
And it opens up the whole, as you say, a whole new area of development and job retention.
To me, that's the biggest thing.
And it just said, peace plus service for the services. That's just weeding to be developed. And they all want water and wastewater. It's just...
I know Matt was on vacation there, I'm not sure if it's last week or this week, but I wanted to email him to see if he got any more information concerning those EDs or dwelling units because there was some discrepancies in there, I think. Curious to see how that pans out.
Yeah, I'm curious on that as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any other questions?
I just have a request, Mike, on your report. This is great to get this information. It's extremely difficult to read. Do you type?
May that computer do not get along.
Okay, that is a request. And the other thing is, as you say, call, if you could just give us more, did you reach him or, you know, reach them and what was the result of the call? You know, that's just my request on it. This is, this is great, I love having this, but a little bit more detail if you could?
Sure.
And typing would be really nice, but I understand.
I kinda do it as I do things or I remember it, so...
Yeah.
To do it on the computer, I don't know.
I understand, not a problem.
No, I could probably type before you might if you want. I do Larry, so...
Well, that's my idea. She might be used to some of this a little bit. Better. It took me a while to decipher some of it, so...
Yeah, I've heard that.
Just a recoil.
My shorthand's not too bad.
Thank you.
Any else?
Not sure if it was brought up in the previous month's meeting, but Paul Calacut at these elementary school, did he have any timeframe or any update on what he's feeling at the school?
He's looking for money. It seems like one minute someone is willing to do the project, the next minute they're out, then he's on to another one, so I, I'm not too optimistic at this time. He'd like to do it, but he has to have the backing. He's going through a transition in his business, so, you know...
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Thanks, Mike. Let's see, we've done the playground committee. The final fall pickup days are scheduled for November 14th and 15th. Clear plastic bags, leaves and lawn debris. Go pick up some loose brush, less than three inches in diameter, five foot long or less. Only one pickup load per property. You can put your bags out by the street. The village crew has been around most mornings to pick it up, so we can keep, we can keep that moving along. The annual winter street warning. No parked vehicles on village streets between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. from November 1st to April 1st to help make planting and sanding easier, more efficient. Our annual village Christmas tree lighting is scheduled for December 15th with music, warm beverages, caroling, and maybe a surprise visit from jolly old Santa himself for the children to share their Christmas wishes. Weather permitting, the festivities will begin about 6:30 and at 8:00. All are welcome to join this annual celebration for the holidays or of the holidays. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And I would also like, and I don't know if we have ever talked about this in the past, but I would also like the board's permission to get some quotes for some new audiovisual equipment to record our board meetings. I'd like to find something with adequate audio service so the public can hear the meetings without having to crank their volume up to the maximum. Calvin does a very good job of putting our meetings on hometown cable, but it is very, very difficult to hear. That's one of the complaints that I hear most often, is people like to watch our meetings, but they have trouble hearing the meetings. I don't know if we can get AV equipment that has VHS tapes, but I would like to look for something that will put a microphone on this desk so that people can hear us. I think that would be, I think that would be very good if you will. So if the board doesn't mind, I will look for some audiovisual equipment, come back the next meeting and share that with you. We have a small issue with the millings from Church Street. We are putting a bid, I would like to put a bid, put it that way, in the newspaper, put that mound of millings up for bid so that someone will come in, take it out of there. It's creating a problem. I don't know how we can fairly distribute the millings down there. A lot of folks have stopped by and asked if they could have some. You know, they want truckloads of it. That presents a couple of problems. How can we give to some and not to others? Plus, if we use village equipment, there is a liability issue loading someone else's vehicle to take care of those millings. So what I would like to do is put it up for bid, have someone come in, clean the whole lot out and then do whatever they wish to do with it. If they wish to sell it to private individuals, fine, it's up to the winner of the bid. I find it very difficult to find a fair way to, you know, to distribute this. You know, if people wanna come in with a five gallon pail and take a couple five gallon pails out of there, you know, I don't think any of us mind, but it's the idea that the people want a lot for their driveways or they want a lot to fill up a soft spot on their property or something. I would like to just put it up for bid and have it be done with. If the board is agreeable.
We've used the, well, that we can't use?
Yeah, well, there's one more. We're going to put a turnaround, put a snowplow and we have to dig out some soft spots before we put the millings in. A village resident has been kind enough to say, go ahead, put some stuff in there so he could turn the snowplow around this way, fill the driveway. That's okay, we'll put that in the bid.
I'm not sure how to fairly do it.
All right. It's really creating an issue. Hey, what I have? Trusty Tremblay?
I really don't have anything this evening. I would like to congratulate Woody and Larry on their certificate of completion on the managing local government conference that they both attended at SUNY pot stand. I see they got contact hours for it and hopefully they came away with some good working knowledge. And that's really all I have this evening.
And they will be going to school tomorrow and Wednesday in Peru for more water and wastewater services.
Contact hours?
Yep, contact hours included, which is necessary, they all need it. Good, thank you. Trusty Gresinda?
Just to reiterate the wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving this month and also do go out and vote tomorrow.
In case you didn't know, haven't received a phone call yet.
Two from Missouri.
Voice your opinion and get out to the poll and vote. That's all I have.
Good advice, good advice. Trusty Tremblay?
No report, but that'll get out the vote. It's very important. You should never have a complaint if you haven't done that. And I'd like to really, congratulations to Woody and Larry on their completion of managing local government as well. Excellent. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Trusty Garrett?
I continue to look for grant money. The list for January 1st is growing longer. Most of them are starting up again January 1st with grants available, so I'm just making a list to hit it hard, rate January 1st and hopefully find some others in the meantime, but have not come across any new ones that are available to apply for now. It's empty or things wrapping up.
Would you share your information with Karen and Bill?
Oh, yeah.
Coordinate all their efforts and...
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Thank you. Another report from the clerk treasurer?
Everyone's been copied with the October revenue and expense reports. And we have one transfer. Transfer from A 1325.4 Treasure Contractual to A 1325.11 Treasure Schooling, $219 in costs.
Any motion to make a transfer?
Salute.
Have a second?
Second.
This is so that we can keep the accounts out of a negative balance? Any discussion on this?
Not on the transfer, I have some other questions.
Approve this first? We'll call please.
Trusty Tremblay? Aye. Trusty Gresinda?
Aye.
Trusty Tremblay?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Hi.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Question I have, back to Smith and Sons and the fuel, and Larry's not here to answer that question, maybe Larry's been... Is the fire department filling up anymore here or are they not? Are they going up to Smith and Sons?
They are.
No, they're, they come here. Okay.
They come here for the gasoline, they go to Smith and Sons for diesel.
Okay.
And they have one fire truck and a couple other, the pickup truck and a van, plus they here quite often.
Brush truck.
The brush truck, yes.
Okay, so the two, the two here, the 32429, the 52595, that's just us though?
No. No. Go ahead, Mom. There, you, let me see what you have.
Under 169.
Okay, you have 80, 5148. No, the distribution called 85138, 5148, that's the fire department. I don't think so.
3410?
3410.
3410 is the fire department. And the other is 5110 is the gas. 5110 is ours.
Is us.
Yeah, right. The 830, what, 3510 is it?
Yeah, 'cause our gas just seemed awfully high at 525 this month. We're not mowing or...
Yeah, but we haven't gotten dealt. It was a couple, a month or so that we didn't get a bill.
All right, so this is a two-month combination?
Like a, yeah, a bill, yeah.
Okay. That just, it seemed higher than normal. The other thing that seemed higher is the Nisic down at Canal Street, the water plant. Seemed very high this month, 55825. As well, another one for 19309. So I didn't know in comparison to the other months, to me that jumped out more so than normal. I mean, I know down at the sewage plant's always high, which it was, 1314 again, but the water plant seemed high, so I didn't know, Larry's not here to ask, did he have a problem with a pump or something running or did he have some issue where it was so high?
Yeah.
Did hydrant flushing?
Yeah, did hydrant flushing, so that'll increase the...
Yeah, but we just did hydrant flushing last week. Week before, it wouldn't be on this Nisic bill.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago.
A couple weeks ago.
What is it, a couple of dollars difference?
We can check it out.
Yeah.
Check out what it's been over the last couple of months and we'll make some comparisons and see.
Okay. That's all. Yeah, with, with going along the electricity thing, I know we had the presentation for Ambion. Ambion?
Ambiot.
Ambiot. Are we pursuing that any further? I mean, it's guaranteed at least 1% savings on electricity? And is there anything further with you with the solar panels that you had brought up? I mean, this is a day and age to be looking at it. And there was a thing with Vermont that I started to look at online the other day and I never finished, but a company coming in now offering solar panels at no cost and you generate all that electricity for your business or home. So I don't know, I wasn't sure if Vermont, you know, if it's just for Vermont or for us, and as I said, I just pulled it up and then I forgot to finish reading about it. But you're seeing more and more of these ads, energy efficient, and Nisic's just, it's like a...
How can we do this for no cost?
A drain. Because it pays it back. They, what you're technically doing is leasing the equipment and they're having to buy it outright because people can't afford to buy the panels. So you're leasing the panels and that expense is going against what you're producing in electricity. So the expense for the panels, that portion goes out to the other users, but anything above the rental amount, you can use for your own home. And the few people that they interviewed, they had more than enough what they were producing to have extra each month for their home. So what I didn't get to was all the business research on that. But I'm seeing more and more of these kinds of things out there and it's so easy to stay with our, what we know, but there's so many options out there. And Nisic is one of our biggest expenses every month, next to personnel, it's coming up there. You know, it's a big expense.
Well, let's, I'll look at that information, give it to me.
Okay.
And we'll see that those...
It sounds similar, but it sounds like a different...
Dave's don't have that information, huh?
Yeah, it was still that.
The guy that was gonna do a presentation maybe?
Yeah.
I think you and Tom were gonna talk tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I thought we decided, we were thinking of having a, just a special meeting for a presentation. I thought after we looked at the electronic version, we decided we didn't want to go that route. And the other two, I think we should just talk to Steve O'Cheezy.
Okay.
To see that their visions were for not going forward.
I'll call when?
I think that was the last thing we were talking about.
Actually, I'll call here. Anything else for the warrant?
The additional invoice, are we gonna do those separate? Well, just curious what the cold packs, that's what played against courts. Was the option of the warrant?
What do we have to do?
Well, I don't think anyone made a...
Yeah, you didn't tell them.
No one made a motion to open or given up for discussion yet.
We just, there's a transfer.
Yeah.
Need a motion to address the warrant?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, floor is open, let's discuss it.
Cold packs are for the sports. We normally buy them at Walmart individually. This time we bought them by the case from playing against sports.
Those are like a cure?
For the, the, for the youth commission. Youth commission, what's the that's...
Those are pennies.
Because we now, the village now does the basketball, has to get the coaches and get all the teams together, so in order to differentiate between the teams, it's a... Okay. And are we doing an inventory on this stuff? So it's used for year to year and not disappearing after each season? So it's out to do the inventory every year?
Yeah, she's done a good inventory.
All right, good. Okay, thank you.
Michelle has done well. Do you want to explain about the systems thing? Karen?
Sure, it's, well, I think I clearly explained it fairly well. They, but Nisic has grant money out there right now for upgrades on this type of thing. If you register, there's, they all... If you regular, there's, they also have money for refrigerators, air conditioners, that type of stuff. But we were contacted, in fact, I think they contacted Juanita when I was on vacation. And they did a presentation last week and came up with a printer that they felt would work for us. It's a $700 printer and state contract pricing on it. And with, with the rebate, we would be down to $135 that we would have to pay for it. There's only a certain amount of money left and as soon as the board approves it, we're going to pay for work. And we pay the cost upfront and then we send in to Nicig the paid invoice and then we get reimbursed for the balance of it. So it'll replace Juanita's old dot matrix. And I think our, my little HP printer that I have is just black and white. I think we're going to end up sending that down to the sewer plant for a week because we have some tonne of it. So we might as well use it.
This is part.
Did you find out whether it's wireless compatible? I asked you that earlier.
I'm not really sure. They said they would come in and set everything up, so.
And what are replacements on tonne for that?
They're, they run about $80. It's not much more than what we're paying now. But you have to buy the color cartridges too.
Right.
They're not, we're going to use your color, you know, I'm sure will last quite a long time, so. They had the, I think in the letter that... It wasn't in here, I took... They had it in their cost per copy, I think it was...
10 cents?
No. The color was like 12 cents a copy. And the black and white, I believe was like 2 cents a copy, if I remember correctly. So it's pretty compatible. The speed is about the same as what we already have, so. But it was a pretty good opportunity to get a good printer for...
Get a crappy printer for $135 right now, so. Pretty good.
Because Nicig rebate is 75% of the cost.
Yeah, great. Time to do it. And is it guaranteed?
Oh, yeah. Well, as, as, last Friday, there was $600,000 left in that fund. So, and they started off at 1.1 million. So it's going fast. It only fell to like for a month. So that's why we were kind of wanting to get this done so we didn't miss out on it.
Want a separate motion for that? Need a motion to purchase this equipment through the Nicig offer?
Make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Get to replacing one that won't be dead, I think, in Nebraska.
State flower.
State flower or Santa Maria or something.
Good boy anchor for next summer.
That's true. Okay, real call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Still emotional compared to what it was. We're still emotional compared to what it was?
Yeah.
We have additional invoices. Did you have questions? We have additional invoices to add to the warrant. In a total of $1,875.38.
Juanita, you also ought to have retired him on that same one. Who's that going to be separate?
It's in, it's added in there. We have the bill in there.
Yeah, but I mean, are you adding that separate from this?
We have the bill in here.
Oh, it's in the, okay.
Replace the tires on the Ford pickup, which are dangerously bald. Any discussion on the warrant?
On the new pickup truck?
On the, yes.
That's new, two or three years old, it's new, honey. So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on the warrant? Real call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Well, been copied with Larry's DPW work log for October 1st to 31st. Been busy this one, flushing hydrants and, excuse me, mixing sand. Snowplow's ready to go. Received a load of salt, put that in the salt shed, mix some. Again, I really feel that that, that salt shed has paid for itself over the last couple of years. I mean, just the amount of money that they've saved, you know, with, with salt purchases. You know, it's not leaching out, so there's an environmental issue. It's not leaching out into the ground. Have any questions on this? I don't know if I can answer, but you can write it down. Number 17, water main break at Vlad's, in front of Vlad's house. It's been very wet down there. The rain and the ground soaking with the water main break. Went down today, cleaned it up a little bit. I don't know that we can seed it and have anything grow. But we went down and picked up the extra, put some topsoil on top, break it down as much as we could and get it, you know, at least the appearance is, is better than what it was. And then we'll have to go back in the spring too. After it settles some more over the winter, we'll have to go back and do some more cleaning up. Seed it so that it'll grow. Anything on here you want me to write down? Okay, to the correspondence please.
Thank you, letter to Women of the World for their flag donations. Letters to gitters for wastewater sewer plant blowers in forming down business who rejected. Correspondence from Tom Warner Cable regarding internal restructuring. Thank you, letter to Morgan Housing for their donation. Letter to William Nixon regarding the inspection of his chimney. Notice violation to not a scientific. Correspondence from Chris Kennedy requesting sewer credit and memo from Deputy, Deputy Clerk Parkland.
In regards to correspondence number two, I'm calling some engineering firms to redo the specs on those blowers. See if we can get them a little less expensive. Maybe I found a Nicig solution. Give this a call. Any questions on the correspondence? Nothing on the GSA meter? I'm going to ask. So it's been a while. Been a while.
There been a decade here?
Uh, pretty, well, I don't know.
It's got gray hair, put it this way.
Yeah.
Gray?
Yes.
Gray purchase request for four tires.
Wasn't that part of the warrant? Oh, okay. Need a motion to pay the purchase request for the tire.
For the four Goodyear, Eurotrack tires for the Ford pickup.
Stay good.
State contract pricing, $190 per tire for a total of $792.32.
Make a motion.
You have a second?
My second.
Real call please. Any discussion on this first?
Were they, now that it's settled, we're doing that ourselves.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
The business? Or is there any other rule business that we need to attend to? The business, get the clerk read the lecture notice, please.
2013 elections Village of Champlain. Whereas the next village election for offices of the Village of Champlain, New York will be held on March 19th, 2013. Whereas the Board of Trustees of said village must designate by resolution public, publish offices which are to be filled at such election and the terms thereof then be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village has determined the following offices to be filled to be voted thereupon with the terms of such offices respectively noted as followed. Mayor term two years, trustee term two years, trustee term two years. Be it further resolved that as requested by section 14-104-3A of the Village Election Law, notice of said village election to be given at least four months prior to said election date, that the office to be voted upon at said election be likewise included in said notice of resolution which shall take effect immediately. Before going question was duly put to roll call vote, which resulted as follows.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ever vote?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
And when can folks pick up petitions to? First of January?
Uh, I think it's, yeah, I think it is actually.
So people seeking office may pick up petitions for the office of mayor or two trustee positions here in the village office first week in January? Okay, thank you. Okay. Need to look at the bids for the, for the 2013 dump truck plow. We received the five bids, only specifications that we set forth. Just need a motion to approve?
One, yeah, great. Motion to...
So that we can discuss the bids?
Yep.
Okay. Need a motion to...
Approve, approve a specific one or just approve?
If you want, I don't think it's a problem.
It's not a problem, right?
Yeah, because you're, you know, you want to talk, talk about the bids, so.
So I would make a motion to approve the lowest bid with Parker Chevrolet for $38,110.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions on this. Is it necessary for us to purchase another full-size truck with, you know, the relatively new? And I know the, the one that's down at the wastewater is in horrible shape. I get that. But can we get a smaller truck? Do we need to get such a big truck? I mean, for the, for the expense? I mean, is it something that we could use this truck that we already have to do the plowing around the, the water places in the sewer plant?
I mean, the new one or the one that we have, the Dodge pickup?
The current one that we have.
The Dodge pickup, I think, is, is a liability. It's ready to fall apart.
No, the Ford, not the Dodge.
It has no, it has no plow.
So what if we just get a plow for that? What if we do the expense of a plow? I mean, we've got a good truck. I mean, I know we've got the money, but would we not be better banking our extra money right now until we desperately need something? I mean, it's a luxury, I'm thinking, to buy a second pickup truck when we could put a plow on our current Nicig truck.
This would be bigger than a pickup truck.
Yes, right.
Dump.
But do we need that?
Well, the thinking is it does some plowing around the village wastewater plant. And as you're saying, there's a couple of streets that are, we use to plow because we don't want to put the truck in there.
Right.
And have to back it out.
But couldn't that be served by a plow on the Ford?
It could, very well be, yeah.
It could. We will tear Ford's part probably over a short period of time, but it could.
And we would use this to...
I don't even think the Ford was, was bought with a plow package. We didn't intend to ever put a plow on it.
It tears the suspension up.
Yeah. I, I think the other uses with this was also to try to, you know, it was going to save taking out the big truck. Every time it would pick the bag of leaves or stuff like that.
Boring out, do you know, so we're picking up our bags of leaves with the front loader. Why are we doing that? Is that not horrible wear and tear on that piece of equipment?
I don't know.
Why is it, why are the bags not being thrown in the pickup truck?
They should be.
Instead of the front loader coming down the street?
Yeah, they should be.
I mean, because I would think that would be horrible wear and tear.
What did it say? They'll be instructed to do that.
So I just, you know, you know me, I'm cheap.
No, that's fine.
You know, I, I just... I, I know we're doing very well down at the wastewater plant and I just, do we need this big of a truck? It would be nice. My question is, do we need it?
Well, I think it would facilitate what we need to do, the plowing and stuff like that. The streets around the, you know, around the village parking lots and stuff that we use to plow. We could put a plow on that Ford, but I think it would, I don't think it's...
Yeah, and I don't know how that would work out with the need of the vehicle. I, I don't, Larry's not here to discuss that. As far as the size of the vehicle, I don't think it'd pay much money for Ford pickup.
Right, no, right. I, I...
You know, you can, you can...
Use it to go and, you know, pick up small loads of cold packs and...
I was really excited with the price that came in on the truck. It's a lot more truck than pickup.
Okay, just a question.
No, it's fine if you have reservations, please.
Do we need this? Is, is, is my question.
Well, I think two of the vehicles out there that we're using quite often, a Dodge pickup and a van.
Those are kind of scary vehicles.
Those are scary vehicles.
Yeah, they are.
And we need...
But is then, what are you going to be driving, this big truck around? What is he going to be using? We don't want him driving that around.
He has to go and plow it. He has to plow out to lift stations. He plows the driveway down at the wastewater plant.
Right, but every morning when he gets in and drives the van around to the water stations and does the readings, what's he going to drive around?
Goes to water, then he goes to wastewater, checks the lift stations twice a day.
Right, but what are we going to have him be driving around to do that? I mean, if these other two are dangerous and should be off the road...
It would be that vehicle.
Yeah, wouldn't be a, the question for this. It's a, it's a large pickup truck. It's a long-term truck. It's a three-quarter, it's bound.
Just got a dumb body, huh?
Extreme difference in cost of operation. I don't know.
And that was a choice between, we chose to get a diesel or gasoline rather than a diesel because it does a lot of idling on small trips. So we figured the gasoline would be better for that rather than the diesel.
I'm asking you. I mean, you're a doctor, some trucks, I don't know I'm diddly about trucks, but, you know, I just, I know about spending money and saving money and do we need it? It's a big question that I tell my kids, do you really need it? Before you go, yes, it would be nice. Yes, it would be a convenience. Yes, it would make things easier. Do we need it?
Well, I think there's also the matter of trying to keep the fleet that we have with vehicles that are falling apart and probably will be taken off the road soon. And you can't wait until you're in dire straits and to purchase something.
Well, something like a truck, you can pick up anytime, really. That's not something that we have to put a bid in like a snowplow, you know, and wait for, you know, all our specs to be made. I mean, this is something we can get when we hit that situation. Just questions.
I think if I understood correctly, you know, when you brought this up last time, in regards to the need for plowing this winter, it was needed. If the Dodge wasn't going to go another winter plowing, you know, turnarounds where the big truck can't get in, parking lots to, you know, water plant, wastewater plants that are...
Are you in your question, the need issue? Looking at the variety of jobs that that vehicle would do? I, I think yes. I just figured the other vehicles that we have, I think...
Well, yeah, there's no question about it. Those need to go to graveyard, I, I get that.
We could buy another pickup or another vehicle, but I, I don't think it would be as effective as this one would be to, to do the jobs that we have to do with...
And there's nothing we can do as far as shared services with something like this? I mean, we want to do shared services, but, you know, it's not like we're...
We attempted to share services.
I know, I know.
And we had zero response from that. Huge reluctance to... Huge reluctance to...
So in regards to, like, can we suddenly do the town floor, is there is?
No, but if we had to do plowing, you know, you know, when they're done with their plowing, borrow theirs and do, do that, practicality or not, it's just a question.
Yeah, that's a question, I, I would like to ask that to the town board.
Yeah.
They won't even, when they come on, I don't know if I wanna belabor this point, but when they come on South Street in the winter time, they will not drop their plow.
I know, blows my mind, yep.
Until they get down past John Zerlos, and then they'll drop their plow. And when they come back up that street, they'll pick up their plow and drive through the stump on South Street.
Yes, it is crazy, it's crazy. Okay, thank you.
Yes, certainly. Any other discussion on this?
That leaves us thirty thousand extra still after this purchase, thirty, what's that one?
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
One ten.
Who do you need many extra?
No, uh, in wastewater count, a little extra we've taken in, we're up, what, sixty-six right now?
Somebody's in that area, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm saying...
We're getting a lot, we're getting about two loads a week this winter.
The next, this, we have a lot. December doesn't produce extra, it's gonna be shit if we tie that.
Yeah, and that'll come to a halt so they fix those pumps and stuff, so, they'll still be out, they'll still be handling outside, but that is not part of the order. Here, roll call, please.
Trustee Trobley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trobley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Uh, sewer adjustment request, you've been copied with that information. The motion to discuss this, please.
Is this for a grade?
Just to discuss it.
I must ask, so moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can discuss this request. Notice, uh, on the second page of your copy, uh, letter by son, uh, just about our sewer bill, eighteen more, the hose was left on for three days, Larry told us it was on and knows about it. And then, uh, on the first page, Donna's, Donna's note on this.
We're back to the same thing, that we said we are stopping giving credits.
Well, that's, that's, uh...
They should be thrilled that Larry went up to their door and told them it was running.
Yes, I agree with you. But we have a request, so...
I understand.
I've been doing that in my house.
So the hose was on for an extended period of time, um...
The water did not go down the way as far as...
Down the street?
Down the street, uh, there's nothing you can do about that, unfortunately.
Any other discussion on this?
Large amount of water usage for the summer, from June to...
They have a pool too, right?
And we don't have much rain.
In the wind. In hot temperatures, constant dehydration. I don't know, do you all have high water bills?
Mine was up.
Mine was up. Down on kids, up on water.
Well, that's, that's what happened earlier.
Moves around this point.
I think, I think the only...
You can drink it. You can swim in it.
Can you, safely?
I think the only thing I'd like to add in the session is just a reminder that the only credit we can possibly entertain would be a wastewater credit when, under certain circumstances, the water, you know, we know when down the drains was treated for nothing, we could consider, but in this case we can't.
Well, they're asking for a sewer credit though.
But it didn't go down, it's sort of, I mean...
Right, well, that's, that's... But they're charged, if the water comes out, they're charged for the sewer.
They're charged for the water, the sewer meter, this doesn't go in the, this didn't ruin the waste...
Yeah, this didn't go in the sewer, well, along...
This did not go in the wastewater stream, so it's, uh, is requesting a sewer credit.
I misunderstood your request, that's my fault. Thank you. I gotta reconsider it.
We have been trying to get away from these, uh, these situations, you just... In fact, we've got a number, this, on this building, where the usage was very high, and calls would come in, ask why their water bill was so high, upon checking on it, it was all something within the house, the toilet was running, some situation like that, causing high usage. Do you have any other...
Go again on the zone. Remember the last time we did this, we actually dug up the minutes, looked at how we worded that? I believe it was something, something to it anymore, depending on case to case.
And they have, if you look at their history, there is a big fluctuation in their charges naturally anyway, so I think that their bill would have been higher, period, because of the pool, the watering of the plants, the dry summer. How do we know that this portion of it was from the running hose solely from that?
So in other words...
We don't.
We don't know how much water it was...
You know, it ran it three days, was it, you know, full force, was it a trickle? You know, we said we were gonna go away from this, this is, there's a lot of ambiguity into this request based on, I mean, they jumped from seventy-three dollars to a hundred and four, to a hundred and fifty, to a hundred and eight, to ninety-five, to a hundred and seventy-five, it's all over the board. So there's no consistency. If it was someone that every single month of every single year, they're pretty consistent in the eighty, ninety dollar, then that's something we can consider and it's easier to track, but this is so all over the board, you know, they've got a, a, what, they've got, as I said, one at a hundred and seventy-five, that was back the ten-one also, so here's a ten-one, this one they're talking about of two oh five, so it's a thirty-dollar difference only from a year ago. So there's a history of increased water usage for that period anyway for them.
Just fluctuate, just fluctuate greatly, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion?
Well, that's, well, I kind of noticed the consumption values of, the one quarter, the first quarter of the summer, twenty thousand E X, and then the next quarter is twenty-eight thousand.
Did she request the major reading, fill the pool? Can you recall?
I, this didn't have it to do, I don't, I don't know anything.
No, but I mean, we're looking at the increased usage, I think it's...
Oh, earlier today you said that you had, she had it read for the pool when I was talking to you, huh?
And they go up and look at it, and then they fill the pool, and they go up and look at it again.
Yeah, but you're not gonna fill your pool, when would that have been if it's October reading, that's a pool, pools are...
Twenty thousand gallons in June, June thirtieth.
Just looking at their ledger, I would, I would have to say no, because their sewer credit looks, their sewer amount looks about what it should be compared to the water. Normally with a, with a credit like that, it would be more close to the water charge.
Right. Any other discussion? So the motion is to...
To disapprove of this, based on, I thought we agreed that based on our decision, I would have discontinued this.
Okay, so the motion is to disapprove this request? You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
Maybe, um, when the warm wa, warm weather starts coming out again, maybe there can be a little blurb, put on the water sewer billings about, please check your hoses to make sure that they're turned off when you're done watering. We had the same thing happen, we got a quarterly bill, it was up a hundred bucks, realized that one of our children left those trickling before we realized it, but, you know, a big bill. It, it happens, it's unfortunate when it does, and it's, it's an expense you're not planning on, but if we could maybe put something out there when the warm weather, garden watering, plant watering, when it's that time of year, people to be just a little more conscious of getting things shut off.
We can do that. I had an outside faucet freeze in the winter time, sprayed the side of my house for a couple hours, and it was not...
Not pretty.
It was not nice. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Trobley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett, or Trustee Grisenda. Trustee Trobley.
Aye.
And aye.
Aye again. Mayor Martin.
Aye. Any other new business? Two may need to talk to you after about negotiations, when you wanna start.
I heard you, I heard you, our new mics picked up what you just said.
And the call started about...
If you could, what his, what that, that word's, uh, what that, their decision not to go forward?
Okay, with the, uh...
Solar.
Source.
I'm gonna send you that website.
Okay, thank you.
I do have the Wasteland hometown cable, or this presentation, you can access it and send it directly to...
It's probably, and it's pretty much the same as what we received, right?
It, it is their presentation in its entirety. They may have adjusted it, I'm sure.
This for the solar we're talking about, or the end?
The solar.
Okay.
Like, the materials they presented, uh, power lines, would follow suit with what they, and show to change it.
Discussion, the board's discussion on this?
Yeah, it's a full board.
Make a motion to adjourn?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, in addition to this, this much I did learn.
I didn't get a copy of the budget, any of your budget paper?
Uh, are you talking about the expense and revenue?
Right. I did, I learned a hard one.